Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's September the 26th, 7:00 PM. Time for the regular meeting of the Wayne Westland Board of Education. Thank you for being here. We are going to begin our meeting this evening with a pledge of allegiance to the flag, led by Gavin Lockney and Abigail Fields from Edison Elementary School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you could both just stay here from the room. Secretary Ms. Hines is going to read the bio.
We have Gavin Lake near Gavin's a fifth grader. Sorry, fifth grade Gavin is a fifth grade student at Edison Elementary in Ms. Ewers class. He is smart, responsible, and respectful. Gavin is a hard worker and enjoys helping his classmates. His favorite food is hamburgers and he loves to read and watch movies. I love movies too. He has, he has read The Chronicles of Narnia, which, and watched Zombie Land recently. Gavin is hoping to improve his writing this school year. And we have Ms. Abony Fields. Abony is a fifth grade student at Edison Elementary in Ms. Breaks class. She is nice, kind, and friendly. Abigail is a good writer and loves math. Her favorite food is chicken. In her free time, Abigail loves to draw and watch Beast on TV. This school year, she is hoping to read lots of new stories during reading time.
Abigail, on behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to present you with this award for participating in the flag ceremony during a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wayne Westland Community Schools. You can hold that. Gavin, also, the Board would like to reward you this certificate, which has your name. It's suitable for framing. I'd like to thank you for being here. Did you bring anybody with you tonight? Like your mother, for instance? Hello? How about you, Gavin? And, and I see also that you brought your principal, Mr. Tile? Thank you, Mr. Tile, for Edison Elementary School. Oh, you wanted me to... Thank you. We know you probably have homework to do. Thank you very much for being here tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the roll call. Ms. Hines, call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Buckaloo.
Present.
Ms. May.
Present.
Ms. Hines, present. Mr. Albrecht.
Yeah.
Dr. Weaver.
Present.
Mr. Neal.
Present.
President Cox.
Present.
Seven zero. Let the record show we have a full board.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Next item on our agenda, 15523, is recognitions and presentations. Dr. Dignan?
Thanks, President Cox. Good evening, Wayne Westland Community and Board. I'm going to turn it over right now to Ms. Polikovic, who's going to give a S R review required by the M D to do this. So again, I'm looking forward to it. She's put a lot of time and effort into it.
Well, thank you, Dr. Dignan and President Cox and the Board of Education. Quickly before I start this, I've been to a lot of board meetings, but I've never seen students do the pledge like that, and I love it. It was so sweet. So I'm definitely something I enjoyed. So I am here tonight to talk about our extended COVID learning plan or E-CO plan. I know that that was something that you probably had approved many times a few years ago. And then the continuity of services plan, and that's something that's a little bit more recent. The reason that we're looking at both of those are because our S R grant that we received from the federal government does have some requirements that come along with accepting those funds. So the E-CO plan was approved or created and adopted in August of 2020. And we need to determine if modifications are needed no more than six months after receiving funds. So that's something, we received funds back in February, so we're a little bit behind. But that part of us doing that is to make sure that we're in compliance. Our continuity of services plan was adopted in February of 2022. And with that, we need to ensure that the public has inputs on the contents of the plan. Hence why we're here tonight. We will then make sure that the plan is updated on the district with the current date. And then we'll redo this every six months until we have exhausted all of our funds or the grant is then over. So just a little review of what our E-CO plan was. It was adopted in August of 2020. This is where we had our students in the learning environment that best suited their needs. So some students were in school, some students were learning virtual. That plan was kind of created to make sure that our students continued their learning in the midst of the pandemic. Within that, we did have to create benchmark goals, and those goals have continued since that plan was created in August of 2020. So the state has required that we have benchmark data. We are using N W B A. There's four approved state tests that we could use, and N W A is one. So we have to show our growth in both reading and math in grades K through eight, both at the middle of the year and end of the year. So our goals, as you can see, are pretty consistent. That 50% or more of our Wayne Westland students will have their reading growth goals from fall to winter for the middle of the year and then end of the year from fall to spring. So we're hoping that they continue to reach those growth goals. The continuity of services plan or the C O S plan requires all districts to outline how they're going to actually use those S R funds and to directly support students, families, and the district. This plan, again, will be reviewed every six months. And then hopefully, if we have any questions or public comment, we can take that into consideration before reviewing it. So here's some highlights from our continuity of services plan. The first was mitigation strategies. We were going to spend money on P P E, cleaning, disinfection. And we have a large sum of money going to HVAC upgrades in almost all of our buildings and advanced filtration systems for air quality. Academic impact. We are working on accelerated learning systems and programs throughout the district in pre-K through 12. High-quality academics, supportive learning environments, really focusing on our M T S S system, which is again part of our strategic plan. The scaffolding our supports, really focusing on community partnerships and job-embedded professional learning. And then just some additional needs. Obviously, educational technology. We've really been planning to make sure those devices get in the hands of our students and also have that connectivity that they need. Mental health supports, innovative instructional improvements, which includes the Wayne Westland Innovative Academy, resources and curriculum. So we've really been looking at how we can best use our money to impact our students in our school district. So some ways that we will see our return on investment is we're going to look through our district and school improvement goals and processes. So that's an ongoing feat that we're looking at often. Targeted support to special populations. So we're really focusing on our most at-risk students. Data collection with accountability measures and professional learning series. So making sure that our staff really has good, quality, job-embedded professional learning. So the last part is just measuring student progress. We're measuring it often and in different ways. We've been working a lot with Joe Orbin, making sure that our staff has access to Edgiclima. We're having some data dashboards, so staff has data accessible to them often and that we utilize it often. Formative assessments, really focusing with daily checks to our classroom teacher. Our staff should know if our students know something before they leave the room. So if they have to tweak something for tomorrow or mid lesson, that they really use those formative assessments to check where students are at. We will also still have summative assessments, traditional tests and quizzes, papers to measure student understanding. And then benchmark assessments, which is our N W E A that we have three times a year, nationally normed, gives our teachers a wealth of data that they can use for their students. And that's pretty much an overview of our continuity services and our E-CO plans. I don't know if there's any comments or questions. Though this isn't something that the Board has to vote on, but just something that we wanted to make sure was noted formally, that we did go through and do this as part of our compliance.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Neal?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just out of curiosity, how long are we going to be engaged in this sort of a keeping up with the plan thing? Is it something related to they keep giving us money? So we have to keep a plan going? Or is there an end date on this?
There is an end date to the funding, and I feel like they just extended it. Sheena, do you know? I think it's 2025?
Correct, correct.
So through 2025, at least every six months, we'll be here to review.
Basically saying the same thing. I mean, the plan's not going to change a lot.
Unless there's some major changes, yes.
Major changes?
Changes to the plan. If we have input that says we need to make some major changes for some reason, then obviously the presentation would change, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other members of the Board? Mr. Buckaloo?
This is federal money, am I right?
Correct.
And they monitor how we use it?
Yes, the state monitors it through the guidance of the federal government.
And as I was looking at the overview, as you presented it, we've used some of that money to make our classrooms a bit healthier, by cleaning up the air, by scrubbing down surfaces.
Correct.
We've used more of that money to address some of the learning loss because our kids weren't able to attend.
Correct.
So in your opinion, are we using this in the best possible way?
I believe so. I haven't been able to look through all of it. I've only been here for five weeks, and I've been learning a lot. I know Sheena could probably speak a little bit more specifically to how everything is being funded. But even from my previous district, we've been doing a lot. We did a lot of the same types of expenditures that we had. I think some of the biggest things that we'll see hopefully would be some of our academic advancement programs to really hone in and focus on the special needs of our students. So I think that that's going to really be a big thing, and we'll be able to hopefully see some positive data from that. Obviously, we know systemic change takes three to five years, so it might take us a little bit. But we've been monitoring that and making sure that kids are getting what they need.
And, and to be honest with you, I kind of suspected some of this stuff. In fact, I'm impressed with the, the nature of the spending that we've undertaken.
I agree. It's, it's a lot. I mean, a lot of money is a blessing and a curse. I mean, it's great to have it, but when you have constraints and you know you have to really spend it in the appropriate ways, that you can't just spend it kind of willy-nilly, it can be a lot. But I think the district's done a really nice job putting it in the proper places to improve both facilities and make sure that our students have what they need. Because obviously, you want to be safe and healthy first and then have the proper environment to learn and move forward in their academics.
There's a string attached to every dime we get, isn't there?
There is.
And that's not necessarily a bad thing.
Especially grant money, you know? They always are looking.
Thank you.
Mr. Albrecht?
So we know that pretty much nationally, students lost ground in their education during...
Ground.
What would be a measurement that you would be able to report to us that these S R funds were actually effective? More than a year's worth of growth for many students? I mean, what would be a...
I don't, I don't know if it necessarily is more than a year's worth of growth. I think it depends on how, how much growth they have to make and the level that they're at. Obviously, our younger learners are going to grow a little bit more exponentially because they have more to learn. So I think it would kind of depend on grade level to some extent. I know that data that we're working on, my partner in crime, high school improvement, the school improvement director, we've really been focusing on the different pieces that are going on in each building. And when we're talking about school improvement goals, we want them to be applicable. So the initial, in my mind, we might be looking a lot at implementation and at the fidelity that things are being implemented. Because if our teachers aren't implementing it with fidelity and we don't have strong data to show that those things are happening, the student data is not going to grow. So we may need to kind of focus on our teachers and then work with our students. I know I met with our Read and Math 180 consultants today, and there's some really good kind of correlation data that we can pull from there. And I think that that's one of the biggest kind of programs that the district has put in place. We're using it at least math in fifth grade all the way up to our high school students. So I think that that's going to be a big push to see if that really accelerated our students' learning. And they have a separate growth measure, so we'll have more than just N W B A data. We'll have another piece of data to say whether that is truly accurate. And those also can both correlate to the M step. So I think that all of those kind of pieces together are going to show us kind of what kind of growth we'll make. My hope is that once things really get, there's really a system in place for the students, that we'll see more than a year's growth. I mean, that's, that's the hope. Because these acceleration programs are targeted to student need. So we're not just giving all kids everything. They're going, if you need help with fractions, you're going to get help with fractions. If you're struggling with comprehension or phonics, that's what you're going to get. So my hope is that we'll see more than that.
Thank you. Other members? Ms. May?
I'll just add, I really appreciate hearing you speak on fidelity. That is a big piece that sometimes is missed. So I'm very happy to hear that, as well as to hear about additional data sources. So I think this is a move in the right direction. We've been excited about Math 180 and Read 180. But to hear those pieces and to hear that language and that that's a part of the conversation, I'm appreciative of that. So thank you.
You're welcome. As are we. We, that's really our big focus, because we know that that's, that's the key.
Other members of the Board comments? Thank you, Mrs. Polikovic, for your presentation.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Next item on our agenda, 156.23, is citizens' comments. This portion reserved for citizens wishing to address the Board on items which appear on tonight's agenda. Excuse me, John. Okay. We have a speaker that wishes to speak on something not on the agenda tonight. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. 157.23 is our motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Weaver. Support.
Support.
Discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. And President Cox?
Yes.
Okay, so let the record show motion carries. I hit everybody.
158.23, Board of Education Committee reports. Ms. May, there's a finance committee meeting?
Yep. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, September 28th, 2022, beginning at 4:30 PM via Zoom platform. Mr. Spiezak shared that the district was looking to purchase four replacement plow vehicles. This will be through the Oakland County Consortium bid pricing. And the funds are allocated in the Maintenance and Operations General Fund budget. Mr. Van Der Zee stated that the district would like to upgrade our two-way radio communications across the district and our standard communication protocols and methods. Mr. Van Der Zee recommended that we proceed with Mobile Communications America for the purchase. Mr. Van Der Zee also stated that they are recommending MOS telecommunications for the purchase of the sound systems for the two high schools, John Glenn and Wayne Memorial. Mrs. Cleves shared both the investment report and the monthly check register. Dr. Dignan shared district updates with the committee. Both Mr. Neal and Ms. May thanked the committee for their work. And the meeting was adjourned at 4:45 PM.
Thank you, Ms. May. Next item on our agenda this evening, 159.23, which is review and approval of the business service items. Ms. Cleves?
Yes, good evening. I want to start with the vehicle replacement program. I'm requesting Board approval to replace the vehicles. These vehicles are 15 to 17 years of age and are becoming unreliable and expensive to maintain and operate. The vehicles will be removed from the fleet and auctioned in the spring, summer of 2023, and the proceeds will then go into the general fund. The pricing of the four vehicles was achieved with the state-county bid consortium price and is good through September 30th, 2023. The cost of these vehicles will not exceed $200,000 and will be charged to the general fund.
Thank you, Ms. Cleves. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hines. Support?
Support.
Support by Dr. Weaver. Discussion? Roll call, vote please, Ms. Hines.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Mr. Neal?
Yes.
And President Cox?
Yes.
Let the motion show record pass. I'm tongue-tied today. Let the record show motion passes.
Should the record reflect exactly what you said? Or can we fix that? Ms. Cleves, will you please bail Ms. Hines out?
I'm a little tired today. I'm sorry.
I am requesting Board approval to award the contract for the radio system renovations to M C A, which is Mobile Communications of America. We only received one bid for this. The award would upgrade our two-way radio communication across the district, allowing our district to have their own frequency channels to communicate on. If approved, the cost will not exceed $539,524 and will be charged to the bond fund.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Albrecht. Support?
Support.
Support by Ms. May. There's discussion? I'd like to ask, are we concerned we got only one bid on a half a million dollar expense? Or is there really only one provider for this?
Well, we got the one bid, but the team did review and analyze the packet, you know, to ensure that it met all of the district needs and requirements. So normally, the team, if it's only one bid, they'll decide if it's, if they should go back out for it. But after the team reviewed it, they were fine with the one bid.
Comments from other members of the Board?
I'm sorry, I thought they looked at three quotes also, if I recall correctly, from the Finance Committee meeting. I believe that was presented. Mr. Neal, do you remember that? They had three quotes, and then they went with, they had three quotes for the two-way radio.
Tony's going to...
Tony? Oh, Mr. Spiezak's going to...
No, we went out for a public bid for the radio, so we only had the one bid. The three quotes were on the sound system.
Got it. Sorry, okay. Thank you.
Other members of the, roll call, vote please?
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
President Cox? Let the record show motion carries, seven zero.
Mrs. Cleves?
The last item is a recommendation to purchase athletic complex sound system. I am requesting Board approval to award the contract for the athletic complex sound system upgrades to MOS telecommunications of Grand Rapids. This upgrade will provide a more adequate sound system for both of our high schools' athletic fields. Wayne Westland received three proposals, and if approved, the cost will not exceed $43,456.80 and will be charged to the bond funds.
Is there a motion? Motion by Ms. May? Support?
Support.
Mr. Neal? Discussion?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
If I could ask Mr. Spiezak to come back to it. We did purchase, some time ago, we did purchase new equipment. But an old man like me still had difficulty hearing. I could hear the football field at my house, but it seemed like in the stadium, it wasn't really getting across like it was jumbled. Would this be a little better system?
Yes, sir. So the new system at both high schools will remove the old system, which is actually 23 years old and was purchased with the year 1998, I believe it or not. And yes, to answer your question, it'll be a lot better. We went out to Michigan State. We looked at the system they had out there, and we kind of mirrored it. So it's going to be what they have at their facilities, on their practice facilities, not the grandstands. But it will be very nice.
Thank you. And Weaver? Other comments? Roll call, vote please, Ms. Hines?
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show seven zero. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 160.23, which is a student reinstatement. Mr. Toko?
Good evening, Board and Community. I'd like to recommend the Board reinstate student 2223-A according to the terms and conditions of the resolution, which is under a separate cover.
Motion to reinstate student 2223-A.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Weaver. Support by Mr. Albrecht. Roll call, vote please, Ms. Hines?
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. President Cox?
Yes.
Let the motion show seven zero. Motion passes.
Next item on our agenda is 161.23, which is the superintendent's report and comments. Dr. Dignan?
Thanks, President Cox. First of all, I want to thank Gavin and Abigail for saying the pledge this evening. Also, Ms. Polikovic, who I thought did a phenomenal job kind of displaying the E-CO plan. Again, she's been here five weeks, and she's already had an impact. I also want to thank the Wayne Westland Community School family for a great launch to the year. Today, we hosted the K L A A Student Leadership Conference. We had over 110 student athletes from around the area at the Career Tax Center. It was pretty impressive. Got a chance to go over there, and seeing the kids interact was worthwhile. Elementary flag and cheer season kicked off. I want to thank Mr. Schultes and others who had a hand in setting up the logistics. Again, that's a great experience for our kid. We started a high school after-school meal program. It just got off the ground last week, and we're still working out the kinks. But we're really excited because now our kids involved in extracurricular activities, athletics, music, can eat after school. We think it's going to be huge on both high schools, John Glenn and Wayne Memorial. Want to thank Amanda Dibis and the Blessing in the Backpack Committee. We're feeding 150 students at Hicks Elementary through this program this year. Also, our, we got a huge donation by the Mo Mount Foundation because of the rising construction costs of the John Glenn Health Clinic. So we're still in line to have it done in April. I want to encourage the community. We have a partnership with Eastern Michigan for the First Opportunity Scholarship. Over 85% of our kids qualify for this scholarship. It's a free tuition scholarship for any student who qualifies for a Pell Grant and has a 3.0 GPA or higher. They've waived the testing requirements, and we're hoping next month a lot of kids apply for it. And I promise, I'm almost done. Just want to thank Tony and his team. We're going to honor our custodians and operations on Friday. Again, it's well due. The bond construction the last couple of years has been monumental. And they handle with grace and always come and deal with any issue and have a solution. So thank you, Tony. The Wayne Westland Early College is going well. We have our first cohort. We're really excited. I think it's going to pick up steam down the line. So again, congratulations to everybody involved with that. One last thing is our homecoming football games. John Glenn will have their homecoming game this Friday night. We hope everybody shows up. They've been having a great season thus far. And I'm really excited because the kids are going to do something different. They're going to kind of have a tailgate with activities geared towards young people, food trucks and stuff. So hopefully, people will come before the game. Wayne Memorial's high school homecoming game will be on Friday, October 7th at 7:00 PM. will come before the game. Wayne Memorial's High School Homecoming Game will be on Friday, October, uh, seventh at seven P M. And then, of course, the, the battle will take place on October fourteenth between John Glenn and Wayne Memorial. So, again, we hope to see everybody there, and I'll end it on that note.
Thank you, Dr. Dignan. Uh, next item on our agenda, ladies and gentlemen, one six two point two three, which is citizens' comments. This portion of the meeting reserved for citizens wishing to address the board on any issue at all. And, uh, Ms. Jessica Goble would like to talk about the tag program.
Hi, as you said, my name is Jessica Goble. I currently have two kids in the district. My daughter is in seventh grade at Stevenson, and my son is in fourth grade at Walker. Um, my concern today is the termination of the tag program. Um, I think it's great Walker staying open, but we've been a part of the tag program since twenty sixteen. My daughter was in it from first to sixth grade and is now taking accelerated classes in seventh grade. My son has been in the tag and tag program since second grade and is now in fourth grade. It's been an amazing program with amazing teachers that we've come to know and love well. Many parents, myself included, are very disappointed to see it end. I know in the email it said there'll be a new instructional framework introduced for all students, but I guess that leaves more questions than answers. I also know this is nearly a year away, so you probably don't have all the information and answers yet, but many parents who are out of district and specifically are here for the tag program said that they would probably return to their home district next year. And this is coming from the W W C S D tag page on Facebook. Um, I guess my fear is that my son will be integrated into a regular fifth grade classroom and be bored because it's a bunch of, like, material he's already learned. Also, I'm wondering if he would automatically be placed back at our home-based school, which is Wildwood. Um, he's very sad about losing the same classmates that he's, well, had for three years at that point. But at the same time, it's, it's much more convenient for me to go around the block to Wildwood, especially since my youngest will be starting kindergarten next fall as well. All in all, I'm just sad to see tag, and then I feel like it was a program that really set Wayne Westland apart from the other districts and attracted more people. That's all I'd say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board this evening? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to, uh, the review and recommendations, members of the Board of Education. Ms. May?
Thank you. Um, my comments will be brief. I'd just like to thank both, um, Gavin and Abigail for their, um, lea- for leading us in the pledge this afternoon, or this evening, I should say, as well as, um, I'm really happy to hear about the high school after-school meal program. I, I think that is, um, needed, and I think it's just, just a, a great opportunity. And when we talk about socially-emotional learning, again, giving kids the opportunity to break bread together, to have that community. So, I really like that. And then, I'm hoping to, um, have the opportunity to hear an update in regards to the early college. So, I'm glad that it's off and going, but I'd love to see a, um, presentation soon, just to kind of hear from, um, staff and students and just how things are going with that.
And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. May. Mr. Buckaloo?
Thank you. Again, my thanks to Gavin and Abigail, Principal Tyler for bringing them this evening. It's always good to have the students get started. It's what we're all about anyway. Um, I think earlier this week, we learned that the, the sale of Tinkham has been finalized. Am I correct on that?
Done, yes.
That's, uh, that's been in the works a long, long time, and it's, it's something, uh, that we can take off the table and, and move forward from. So, I'm pleased to see that. I'm also very pleased with the presentation for, uh, Ms. Polikovich and her asset presentation. Those funds coming from the federal government have been instrumental in us doing a number of things that are of a very positive nature. Uh, and to our speaker this evening, uh, the tag program was an outstanding program. Uh, and I'm sorry to see that we no longer have it. I'm sure that there are some good reasons why we've had to move on from that, but, uh, I lament it's us. So, I'm with you on that count. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. Ms. Hines?
Yes, I'd like to announce, um, I'm a top lady of distinction. We have our top teens of America, so they're actually doing some inductions, and I definitely want to get this out. It's an amazing organization for teenagers from thirteen to, um, eighteen, the scholarship. Um, they do encourage academic excellence, social graces, leadership, development, pride, home, and they do a lot of community service. So, you know, we have, like, the upper bounds. We have national honor societies. It'd be a great organization for anybody who's interested, like, uh, who has a teenager. Um, I have some applications. I'll definitely get this out to Dr. Dignan to get this out to the community. Um, I got it not too long ago, so unfortunately, the closing date is gonna be on the thirtieth of September. But, um, Lady Rosalyn, Bill Berry Smith, she's the top teen advisor. Um, her phone number is seven-three-four-three-five-five-five-zero, sorry, seven-three-four-three-five-five-five-zero-zero-nine. If you guys have any questions, I'll definitely get this out to the community, cause like I said, it's an amazing organization, scholarship opportunities, community services. It's almost like a junior fraternity sorority type thing, but it's really great. Um, I have one more announcement. Um, I have been partnering with, uh, Natasha Lee from That Girl. She's actually amazing. She's done stuff with Oprah. Um, she's got this program for kids with the Detroit Pistons as a partnership, where you, um, like, the kids get discounted tickets to go to the Pistons game. Um, so for instance, they have, like, hundred level, um, it's at forty-five dollars, two-hundred level, twenty-five dollars. Um, the dates are gonna be, like, Friday, October twenty-eighth, uh, Sunday, December eighteenth, and I'll get these out to Dr. Dignan as well. Um, if you're interested, it'd be pistons.com slash That Girl. And again, it's Natasha Lee. Her number is three-one-three-seven-seven-one-seven-five-eight-eight. So, this is an amazing opportunity for kids to be able to go to the Pistons at a discounted rate, and the money goes into, like, a scholarship program. So, anything we can do to help the kids in the community. And one last thing, I had an amazing career fair. Thank you, Wayne Westland, for showing up. We had over forty-five vendors show up, and it was amazing. I was able to go to Channel Four. I was able to invite the school districts, so we had Wayne Westland, Romulus, Westwood, um, Taylor Schools, and American International Academy. Cause my job, I wanna bridge the gap and bring us all together as one big educational community. So, thank you all, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, President Cox. I wanna thank Gavin and Abigail for leading us in the pledge. I wanna thank Ms. Polikovich for, uh, her presentation. Um, it was very good and to the point. And, uh, lastly, I, I guess I'd kind of like to talk a little bit about our district communication system and how extensive it is. Um, and I brought, I'm doing that because Mr. Buckaloo brought up, uh, and spoke about the fact that the Tinkham sale closed on Monday. We get three different communications a week. And when I say we, our board members. We get this week in Wayne Westland, board updates, and I forget what the third one is. Um, depending on how often my dog wants to go out, it takes about three to four hours for me to read all of those. It's a tremendous, tremendous amount of information. And I think most importantly, what I mean by that is, there is a lot of good things happening. A lot. If you're out there and you see this meeting and you're thinking about it, reach out to your principal if you'd like to know something, cause they can direct you to where you can get that information. Your principal should be the hub of your neighborhood and where, who you would go to if you need some information. And clearly, they can direct you where you can find out what you might need to find out. The information is there. Finally, I'm looking forward to homecoming this coming Friday. I've missed it the last couple of years, and I'm really looking forward to it.
Yeah.
That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, I just wanted to say tonight that I am thankful for the ongoing discussions that we're having concerning, um, even more security in our buildings. One of our top priorities is to keep our kids safe when they come through our doors, keep them safe throughout the school day, and, uh, send them home to their, to their respective families. And, um, this district has, uh, worked hard. Uh, wanna shout out again to Mr. Spiezak and, and his crew, uh, for all the work that they have done, um, working in our buildings through the bond program to assure the safety of children. So, I'm very thankful for that and look forward to ongoing discussions.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Chief Neal?
Yes, Mr. President. Well, tonight, we voted to replace four pickup trucks, uh, with snow plows. And, uh, when I look at how old they are, fifteen to seventeen years old, it's like a miracle. Somehow, our staff has been able to use those vehicles, which is some of, that's some of the hardest work you can do with a vehicle, for fifteen to seventeen years. And, and, and we've been frugal enough to keep them going and keep using them, thanks to Mr. Spiezak and the people who maintain, and the people who use those vehicles in a way that allows them to be used over and over again for that long. I've never heard of a plow truck fifteen to seventeen years old. Pretty amazing. That's it.
Thank you, Chief Neal. Uh, some of those trucks, we appreciate. Mr. Spiezak, do you plow snow at night, so no one can see how they look?
But bring the new ones out during the day.
I'd like to mirror some of the comments that Dr. Weaver mentioned. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say that on the twelfth of September, I attended a meeting of the sta- uh, or rather, on the twelfth, the, uh, Board of Education had a special meeting, uh, with the representatives of the City of Westland and the City of Wayne, and also the City of Inkster. And we talked about, kind of had a wider conversation that involved, uh, recreational opportunities and how we might share resources and, and, uh, to, to create more opportunities for children in our school district for recreation. And then, we had a, uh, a, a conversation, or rather, frank conversation about school safety issues. And it's, of course, a, a, a very large, uh, a, a large conversation to have with many different aspects. Uh, we had, uh, again, just before the meeting tonight, at six o'clock, we had a special meeting wherein the board reviewed some of the things that we heard at that meeting. And in, in anticipation of a meeting that's gonna take place a month from tonight, at the Wayne County Community College District Ted Scott Campus, that will involve, uh, the communities of, uh, what, Taylor, Canton, Wayne, Westland?
Plymouth Canton.
Plymouth Canton, the police departments of those jurisdictions, representatives from all school buildings, the idea of which is to have an entire conversation about the district's approach to the issue of school safety, both for children and our employees, who also deserve to go home safe at the end of the night. And that's our responsibility. So, uh, you see some school districts across the str- the state doing things that, that, that their boards believe is in the best interest of maintaining that level of security. And what the board talked about tonight is instead of a knee-jerk reaction to this, uh, let's entirely look into this problem and see how we can approach it and put systems in place that are verifiable. And I don't know, Dr. Ophelia, you mentioned during the meeting in the study session, so it, it could be tested. What, what we're doing can be tested. It's just to put a system in place without testing, uh, how it works is. So, there's going to be more on this. Uh, after our meeting a month from now, the board is going to get together again and try to identify a path forward, a prudent path forward on, uh, on what we can do to, to improve things. Uh, not, not our response, not just our response, because we feel that the police agencies that are, that the school district falls in are well capable of handling emergencies. What we wanna do is to handle these emergencies before they come, be, become aggressive emergencies. While, you know, there's kids that are in trouble out there, and maybe we can reach those kids before it gets near that point. I also like to thank the parents of Stottlemyre Early Development. I was in attendance at a meeting. It was a great meeting. I enjoyed being there, and I appreciate, uh, I appreciate that I was invited. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hines. Support by Ms. May. I could see it in her eyes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. You're adjourned.